Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. With the pledge of allegiance of the United States of America and the judicial republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the prayer today, Joga County and Lake County lost a great man, Mike Warner. And he was a firefighter for, he was a fire chief for Concord in his younger years. He was in Hampden. So today's the firefighter's prayer. When I am called to duty, God, wherever flames may rage, give me strength to save a life, whatever, whatever be its age. Help me to embrace a little child before it's too late, or save an older person from the horror of that fate. Enable me to alert, to hear the weakest shout, and quickly and efficiently to put the fire out. I want to fill my calling and give the best in me to guard my neighbor and protect this property. And if according to your will, I have to lose my life, blessed with your protecting hand, my loving family from strife. Amen.
Amen. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Going through several financials, for July 9th, I approved a formal contract purchase order from the Commissioner's Office to cash moving corporation for moving expenses related to the Board of Elections relocation to the county office building. On July 15th, I approved an appropriation transfer from the Commissioner's General Fund Miscellaneous Capital Transfers Out Account to the Sheriff for additional appropriations needed for the purchase of six new patrol vehicles. I also approved a supplemental in the Commissioner's Capital Reserve Fund Phase Two Utilities and Permit Fees Expense Account to cover upcoming expenses related to the sewer service connection of the new youth center. Also on July 15th, I approved a cash transfer from the Commissioner's General Fund Miscellaneous Capital Transfers Out Account to the New Dog Shelter Building and Improvement Fund that was approved in session on December 27, 2024. Also approved a transfer from the General Fund to Family First Council for the July through September 2025 commitment. I approved an encumbrance increase from the Commissioners to Lake County Court of Common Pleas Juvenile Division for the fees to house juveniles in the custody of the court. I approved travels from the Common Pleas Court to attend the Supreme Court of Ohio Judicial College Civil Procedures by the Numbers Course from the Engineers' Office to attend the 2025 County Engineers' Association of Ohio Bridge Conference. I approved a purchase order from the Water Resources to Junction Auto Sales, Inc. for the purchase of a 2026 Dodge Ram 1500 Quad Cab four-by-four replacement pickup truck. I approved a voucher for $190,596.46 from ADP to CDW Government, Inc. for the county's CrowdStrike Computer Endpoint User Protection Services Renewal, paid $125,604.44 in 2024. I approved a voucher for $63,721.99 from the Commissioner's Office to the Ohio State University for the county's third quarter 2025 program support payment. I also approved a voucher for $557,166.86 from the Commissioner's Office to Infinity Construction Company for Pay Request 21 of the Courthouse Expansion Project. On July 22nd, I approved an appropriation transfer from the Commissioner's General Fund Miscellaneous Reimbursements Account to ADP for Corsa Cyber Grant reimbursements that were deposited into the General Fund. I approved a supplemental from the Auditor in the General Fund Vendor License Reimbursement Account to allow for a payment of vendor licenses to the state. I approved a cash transfer from the General Fund to the Board of Developmental Disabilities for gas well proceeds from April to June 2025. I also approved a cash transfer from the General Fund to Community Development Metzheimbaum and Board of Elections for the second quarter 2025 interest transfer. I approved, I approved a travel encumbrance from the Auditor's Office to attend the Ohio GIS Conference and from Job and Family Services to attend the Ohio Child Support Professionals Association Leadership Training. I approved a voucher for $58,792.6 from Community Development to Country Roofing LLC for CDVG grant funding for the Chigran Falls Park Community Center Roof Project. I approved a voucher of $89,775 from the Sheriff's Office to Motorola Solutions, Inc. for 800 megahertz trunk radio system upgrades. And that's all on the financials.
Thank you.
Moving on to the items that were approved on July 14th, I approved for the Department on Aging Hiring Amy Walsh to the position of Part-Time Recreation and Education Assistant Number 1005-1 to be effective July 28, 2025 at the rate of $19.23 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. I approved also for the Department on Aging and Unpaid Personal Leave of Absence for Jason Nelson, Maintenance Coordinator for 80 hours, 10 days during the period of August 11 through August 22. This will extend his probationary period by 80 hours or 10 days. I accepted for Community and Economic Development, I accepted and approved the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Semiannual Report and the Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Income Report for the period of January 1, 2025 through 30 June 2025, and further authorized the electronic submission of these reports. I acknowledged for Job and Family Services the following new hire appointment as the Executive Director of Job and Family Services complied with the Board of Commissioners recruitment and hiring procedures for Alyssa Foreman, Social Services Worker Replacement, effective June 23, 2025. I approved for Maintenance, increasing the current posting for the position of Maintenance Worker, Number 1904. From one to two positions, these positions will remain posted until filled. On July 21st, for the Department on Aging, I amended the motion from July 14th to review the start date to read, approving hiring Amy Walsh to the position of Part-Time Recreation and Education Assistant, Number 1005-1 to be effective August 4 at the rate of $19.23 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. And finally, on July 21st, I approved for the Department of Water Resources the resignation of Cassandra Stoltz, Maintenance Worker, Number 2330 to be effective July 25, 2025. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move down to three and four, about the minutes the Commissioner's Office has approved and execute the minutes for the meeting of June 3 and June 10.
Those include my red lines, Kristin. All right, I'll make a motion to approve items number three and four.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes. Order of action. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you ready? We are requesting the, our electronic poll books that no longer have any use to us to be authorized to be discarded. And so in that way, we don't have to move them to the new building and store them. They are no longer, they can't be updated anymore. Your vendor doesn't support them anymore. And they've been stored on our shelves for probably a year and a half, two years or so. So we had a resolution made and are looking for your approval.
So is there anything for the purpose of voting?
Not for the purpose of voting. I mean, if the school district...
But other than voting, if it was something that...
We did want to try to donate even to schools or something once, you know, everything was wiped clean, but...
Yeah. Because they're like iPads, right?
Exactly.
And even if it was something of, you know, Department on Aging or something, if they have a program or something.
Our prosecutor considered them voting equipment, even like that. So that's the reason.
Yeah, you hate to just take that and throw it out, right? You paid them out for it.
I know, I know.
So, okay. But you guys are looking into that possibly to repurpose them into something?
The county prosecutor's office deemed them voting equipment and therefore cannot be transferred to another department.
Oh.
Yeah. And since they're no longer updatable, there's no other Board of Elections that would use them or could use them.
Same.
So how many years did you have them?
Since 2017, and then about two years ago when they became obsolete.
And so you replaced them with new poll pads?
Yes.
And what's the...
They've been replaced.
Okay.
And how many are there total?
Ninety-five. Ninety-five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Thank you.
For clarification, this is item number five. We're just doing poll books. Number six is another separate resolution. So we're motioning for item number five.
Yes, sorry. Did I say five and six?
I, yeah, I just want to make sure that we got the right one.
Okay, yes. I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Yes. Did you guys state your name and...
I was agreeing. I was going to apologize. No, we are in order of elections. Nora McKinnis. I'm Deputy Director.
Scott Dasher, Office Administrator.
So moving to item number six.
So number six was also...
Yes. The, we were told we needed to request a, a new fund for this grant money that we received from the Secretary of State. It's for our newest security directive. And so this is just, I guess, the paperwork needed for us to be able to deposit the $10,000 check into a separate fund to be used for cyber security within the department.
Okay. So you already received the $10,000 grant?
It's been sitting in our drawer. We've been waiting for the meeting.
Very good. And then that's to, specifically to comply with the Secretary of State's recent directive, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, I mean, how is that coming along so far, your compliance? Do you feel you're currently in compliance with that directive?
We are. We had a meeting. We were one of the, you know, pilot counties. And we went through a large process with IT and the Secretary of State. We had a big meeting. And so we're on that point ahead of the game. A lot of the counties, I think they had seven or nine pilot counties, so they have a lot to do yet. So we're looking at, we need to upgrade our two computers that run our early voting absentee ballot printers. Those can't be upgraded to Windows 11. So that's one of the things we're planning on spending.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six on the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. Just push a button now, right?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shane.
Hi. I just have two items on the agenda today. Item number seven, County Engineers' Office requesting the Board to approve and execute change order number one and final, decreasing the contract with Ronia Caving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of various roads including Clay Street, County Highway 37, Sections E and F, and Leggett Road, County Highway 33, Section A, Huntsburg, Montefiore Township in the amount of $32,161.50.
So Shane, the deductions that relate to this change order, are they services no longer needed on the project?
Just material quantity was below our estimated quantity. So...
Got it. So I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And item number eight, Engineers' Office requesting the Board to approve and execute change order number two. And final, increasing the contract with Ronia Caving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Auburn Road, County Highway Four, Sections R through U in Sharton Township in the amount of $9,581. And similarly, that was a quantitative adjustment upward, some more repairs and asphalt material for that project.
Gotcha. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Jessica Bolt, Director, Joga County Department on Aging. We have been having difficulty maintaining our adult day service assistant. The position is currently a five-day-a-week position. It's about 25 to 27 hours. The ongoing theme for individuals leaving is that they are not looking for a part-time, five-day-a-week position. So what we are asking to do is increase the number of part-time positions to two part-time positions. And what we are looking to do is reduce the amount of hours for each of those positions. So to do two days, one week, three days the next week, three days, one week. So to split those 25 to 27 hours amongst two positions instead of having one position that works.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, but be more responsive to what you're hearing from people.
Yes, we seem to be attracting more retired individuals who don't want to work five days a week. So we're seeing if we can get the right individuals to work with us so we don't have this constant turnover to better serve our clientele.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I'll make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Yes.
And number 10 would be to increase the postings from the current one position that we have to two positions. I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Elaine Moss-Mackey, Program Manager for Community and Economic Development. I have item number 11 on the agenda today. Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise, to hold public hearing number three for the Community Development's black grant, CDVG's revolving loan fund program. This public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 12, 2025 at 9:45 a.m. And notice of this public hearing will be advertised on July 31, 2025 and on the county website.
So this is a $2.6 million request for the senior center purchases. And then can you tell me, like, how does that process work? So this is one part of the process? We have to hold a hearing and then we have...
We have to hold a hearing. Then we have to apply to use these funds. They are our funds that have been built up over, I don't know how many years. I think it's like 15 or 20. The interest that goes back into the account, we are able to use this for a project. We are, and the state wants us to keep these at a lower amount than what we currently have. So the senior center purchase is a great use of these funds.
And who holds the funds now?
They, we do.
Okay. All right. That wasn't clear to me. So that's interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As they can pay back in, as they can pay back in, you know, we loan out and then as they're paid back in, we keep that in account. So...
I see. All right. I'll make a motion to approve item number 11.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Morning, all. Good morning. How are we doing today? Good.
Just peachy.
Peachy. Item number 12, the maintenance department is requesting the Board to approve and execute change order number one, increasing the contract with North Bay Construction for the Department of Energy Services General Upgrade Project due to a change in the scope of work regarding the automatic transfer switch in the amount of $10,350.38. For some reason, I don't know how this got missed, but even our contract says generator and transfer switch upgrade. So a couple of weeks ago, when we were in a meeting talking and going through this whole thing, where we're putting the new transfer switch and everything, it was like, we're not. So we got that corrected right away. So, which is good because it's in enough time so it'll come with the generator, the transfer switch. This still puts us way under the other, we had three bids come in, so it still keeps us way under that, those other bids that come in.
So if you lose power, then it will, the generator will automatically kick in with the transfer switch? Is that how it works?
Yes. Yes, that's what the transfer switch is.
All right.
No. Very good question.
All right, I made one.
How many bidders on that?
There's three.
And they all missed the transfer switch?
Yep. A lot of times, what we're finding out is they won't replace the transfer switch because a lot of transfer switches will work with other generators. I've learned in the past, I've been burnt a couple of times where a transfer switch is sold, like this one is over 20 years old. So I like to go with a new transfer switch that we know works with the generator that's being replaced.
Yeah, it seems like a good time to replace. I'd do replace.
Yes.
Second.
I make a motion to approve item number 12.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Yes.
Item number 13, the maintenance department is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for bids for the West Joga Senior Center Wastewater Treatment Plan Dedicated Standby Generator Installation to be held on Wednesday, August 20, 2025 at 2 p.m. Notice of the bid opening will be advertised on July 25, 2025, August 1, 2025, and on the county website. This is for putting a generator at the West Joga County Senior Center. That'll keep that building up, plus it will keep our county wastewater that we're working with in that guy. Also, we have a plant out there that takes care of the Metzheimbaum, the senior center, and the bus garage out there.
What does MSI stand for?
Metzheimbaum, Joga, and some industry.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I was wondering. So this isn't just for the West G Senior Center, in other words?
That generator will only take care of the West, West Joga or...
Senior Center.
Senior Center, thank you.
Okay, so for...
And the wastewater plant that's out there that takes care of everything on that property.
Okay. So, I mean, that's what I was asking. It's not just the senior center. It's the senior center and the wastewater facility?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm looking at the cost, and it's $191,000. So that seems crazy for a tiny senior center.
We're, we're doing the whole building, so the engineer procted. That's with the HVAC and everything going on that building. So that's like a 200 a kilowatt generator out there.
So that was my other question. So that will, that will power the full facility?
Yes.
You know, not just their refrigerators or whatever, but that's everything?
Correct. Plus the wastewater.
Okay. And then is, I mean, is the thought that that can be used as a warming center?
Yes.
I mean, is, okay. So there, there's, there's merit to this generator, other than just like the seniors can do their stained glass? No offense.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It's been sat down, thought of, that could be used as a warming center for down there.
Okay.
Can also, with the wastewater plant, when they lose power down there, they have to bring in trucks to pump out and stuff like that. So it's a lot of cost savings.
I understand.
Over 15 years, it'll do a cost savings.
All right. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And you mentioned a transfer bus, busted garage up West, West G there?
Yes, there's a bus garage out there.
Is that owned by...
That is that school system.
Okay.
That was put in place, I don't know, 15, seven years ago with Metzheimbaum. Yes.
Okay. There's no, there's no cost sharing with that garage? I think it's owned by West G Schools, isn't it?
Right. That generator will not, they have their own generator for their garage out back up there.
Thanks.
Yes.
I move to approve item number 13.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Y'all have a good day.
Good morning.
Good morning. Nick Goris, Water Resources, item 14 on the agenda is requesting the Board award the bid to Almond Oil Company for the fuel and fuel tank provider services for a three-year contract. They represented the lowest and best bid and the only bid. Almond is currently the provider that we use. Maintenance and DES also use those tanks from our system. So it's based on the state bid, it seems.
I move to approve item number 14.
Second.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Yes.
Item 15 on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and authorize Commissioner Spillar to execute the OWDA fund payment request number four for tech services for HDR in the amount of $65,245.33. This is for the McFarland Technical Services that HDR provided for the construction project.
I move to approve item number 15.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Yes.
Item 16 is requesting the Board approve and authorize Commissioner Spillar to execute the request for partial payment number one for Shook Construction Company for the McFarland Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project in the amount of $3,110,816, and execute the OWDA contractor's estimate and fund payment request number one in the amount of $1,610,816. The difference here, 1.5 million is actually going to be paid out of our ARPA allocation. That 5 million, so we're, you know, using that one, it gets the money rolling a little bit quicker for the contractor, but use that ARPA up before the deadline.
So Nick, is there like an owner's rep in this situation? Like who, who's making sure that, you know, the work that we're paying for is actually being done and being done up to standard?
So that's where the tech services agreement is with HDR. So that's where the tech services agreement is with HDR Incorporated. So they're the engineer that did the design and also the onsite, our rep onsite. And of course, we're there 24/7 because the plant's running 24/7. So weekly progress meetings, we have onsite between the contractor's team and our team. And starting next week, I'll be down there every Monday. It'll be part, it's part of my plan, I set up an office so that I'll be walking and working the site too, so.
Okay. What's the estimated completion date?
July of 2027. So hoping that we will, in theory, we should be switched over to the new process treatment, hopefully in March, April time, because once we switch over, then we have to demo the existing treatment process and turn that into EQ. So there's a timeframe where we'll be running both plants basically at the same time to transition over.
Yes.
Um, I move to approve item number 16.
Second.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes.
Item 17 on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute service contract agreement with Shep Electric Company Incorporated for form generator maintenance and repair services, including emergency service calls at various locations for a period of one year not to exceed $5,000. Goes along with what Glenn's doing right now, working those transfer switches, making sure we have one that actually broke on us down at McFarland that took us a long time to find somebody who could actually do the high voltage maintenance on it. So we were able to, Chris Blair and I, we found somebody, a local actually, who was pretty good to help us out to, you know, look at that ATS. So it's very important that we maintain those because when they don't switch over automatically, our problem with that one is it wouldn't switch back.
I got that.
So it would switch over to generator, but when the power came back, it would switch back.
That was your cheapest request. You should have starved it out. It's all move to approve item number 17.
Second.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes.
Your least expensive, not your cheapest.
That's the cheapest, right?
You should be more precise about that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Kathy Hasfeller, and I am on the Commissioners' staff. And I'm here today to request that the board approve and authorize the group retro effective rating program for 2026. Um, we did present this. Sedgwick was here with us. Mara McLean was here, and it was tabled at that time, so I'm glad to ask for your approval. The deadline is about three days away, so...
So Kathy, could you talk about, so Gagga's EMR looks like we've improved significantly over the years, but our group retro refunds have also declined during the same period. Could you talk about why that's happened?
Sure. The BWC adopted a new reserving program, and it's a system called ACES. It used to be called MIRA reserving, which causes lower rebates in the group retro program. However, if you, if you look at everyone's premiums have gone down over the years, so it just goes along with, we're going to have lower rebates because we have lower premiums in the pool of 59 people. When this started 15 years ago, Gagga County was at the inception of this program, and I sought this out really because we were at the NTR PDP Plus program. There were only 10 people in there, and the county took a chance on this program because we really didn't know how it was going to work out. And Sedgwick was right there with us. So it started out, and it was just, it turned out to be a very good thing that a lot of people jumped on the bandwagon with. The other reason, though, that the refunds declined is that the base rates, like I just said, there's 650 different base rates in the state of Ohio, and those have come down over the years too. So when base rates come down, this is good news. I mean, we want those to come down. But when they come down, the premium goes down as well, and then the refunds follow. The other part is that the expected loss rates and premium ratios have also come down, and there's been an increase in the loss development factors, which reduces rebates. BWC can do what they want. They can formulate this however they want. And so that is the reason for that.
So we're paying more, a more fair price, in other words?
We are.
So we're paying less upfront, so we're getting less as a refund?
Exactly. If we were on our own, we would be paying the same premium, and I just want to emphasize that. This program is a pool of 59 people, of 59 counties. And so we all pay our individual premium based on our claims experience. And that's where, when I, when I talk about claims management, and I talk about all the elected officials, directors and supervisors being on board in the county, that has helped significantly, as well as our chargeback program, which we developed to tie in not just our payroll dollars, but also our claims experience. So we have more buy-in from all, all of the departments. And we have our hiring authority under the Commissioners, but we have a lot of other people, a lot of other agencies, elected officials in this program. So it takes everyone working together to bring our claims down to, and I want to clarify something too, in the June 24th presentation, we have not, we are very fortunate, we have never had an employee related fatality here in the county. So we are doing all that we can do on our end. All we can do is try and pick the right program and hope that the Bureau is fair with us too. And I want to also point out that in years, um, when we had no refunds, 2018 and 2019, that is really when the governor looked at how much money BWC had and said, "You've got to give this back. You really need to give it back." Should they have taken it in the first place? No, they took too much from everyone, but they gave it back, which was probably, Adrian, you can help me out maybe, I would say at least $600,000. So every penny we spent in those years, we got back. Had we been in a self-insured program, that we would not have realized any money back because we're just kind of on our own.
Right, so how, how did you get the refunds back of $600,000?
They just gave us the amount.
That, so that's not, and that wasn't reflected in the materials?
It's, it's not, because if you look on the, on the form that I gave you, and you all got those, right?
Yeah.
I know, I know Commissioners Spittler, I sent those to you because you, you were... But yeah, we received that just in a form. You'll see there, there were no rebates during that time of 2018 and 2019, because we got our premiums back. Everyone did, not just us.
So why is it reflected as no refunds?
Because we didn't get it back from our group retro program.
I see. So it was refunded by the BWC?
Right. So we wouldn't get a rebate on something they gave. They gave the whole thing back, not just a rebate.
Okay.
For the program.
Um, I mean, you know, I guess the thing, the thing that I'm skeptical about is when I see our EMR drop below one. Um, I mean, that means we're doing better than expected.
We are.
Right? Um, and I, I mean, I, and so I think if we were at one, like, to me, it makes sense to join a group where there's better EMRs to, uh, to spread out that risk. But it seems like, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like that's luck that our EMR has gone down. That's a result of practices that are developed within the county, right?
Well, and all the things I just mentioned before. The base rates came down, there is a new mirror system that they, a new...
But that wouldn't, that wouldn't impact our EMR?
Yes, it would.
How would it, but, I mean, I, I thought that that was just a ratio from what is expected for losses versus what actually happens.
Yeah, it affects the premium.
That affects the premium, but doesn't it impact the EMR?
No, it doesn't. But one claim can affect an EMR. It's a lot of the...
Right. That, that part I understand, but that wouldn't impact, so, but the EMR is a standalone value, correct?
It's our experience modifier. It's, it's a ratio of fixed and expected losses.
Correct.
With the Bureau, right?
Correct. Um, that, that was my understanding as well. So my, my point is just, if we are below one, and we have cash reserves, where if there is a catastrophic event, we could cover it. Um, I understand when we first joined this program, that was not the case. I just think we should be looking at different options so that we are really capturing our own performance.
I think part of getting this great performance is because of being in this consortium that they're making you, or highly suggest that you have a safety committee.
Right.
You have meetings. There's certain criterias that have to do to be in this program.
It's called the 10-point plan, and it was actually developed by CCAO. That's how this originated. And they came in and said, as they have been, like, we are in three pools really low. I wouldn't say group retro as well as a conglomerate of, of counties, but it's, you know, for healthcare and for workers' compensation, and certainly for corset and liability. So when it comes to workers' comp, they just said, "Okay, anyone who wants to be in this, in either group retro or group," which used to be the, the place to be, "You have to follow these things. You have to have a safety committee. You have to have a coordinator." And so we meet those criterias, and we follow that plan. And that's, that's what precipitated all of this. I understand what you're saying, though. If we were out on our own, I, I don't, I looked at other plans, and as you know, per your request, we, we looked into self-insurance. It was highly recommended, and I want to say Sedgwick has been with the county for quite some time. They're a trusted employer advocate. I can't stress that enough. Our TPA works in the best interest of the county, of the employer. We have an MCO that's required by the Bureau, and that is, you know, more of an employee advocate. They're working more with the employee. So, um, looking at self-insurance, though, to be totally on our own and pay dollar per dollar, we would be paying all of the medical, all of the time off, all of the, there would be no handicap reimbursements. It would, we were, we're totally on our own. I, I, we did the feasibility study with Sedgwick, who said it really would not be in our best interest. And what do they have to gain? We pay them $9,500 a year, not just to do group, group retro, but to also do all of our claims mitigation and to all of our hearing representations. We would be hiring attorneys to go to those hearings.
So just to be clear, their analysis did show under two scenarios. They showed us three scenarios.
They did.
And under two scenarios, we would be seeing savings. Now, there would be an administration cost on the county as well, and so I understand that those savings would be perhaps wiped out.
Right.
But, I mean, their analysis shows saving money under two scenario, two of the three scenarios. And then, I mean, the other thing to me, it does make sense, like, there is a motivation for the group to want someone that's performing well to stay in the group.
Right. But that could change in next year. We could have a series of claims that could be not even catastrophic, just maybe three really, really bad claims. We hope that, we hope not for the employees' sake, but we could. And then, you know, that experience modifier goes from point, you know, below one to 1.25. And now you're searching to get into a program, and they really don't want you to get into the program. So I think, you know, we've proven ourselves to be, um, to be a good, a good study in this program, if you will, and it's, it's worked for the county. And I've looked at other programs, self-insurance. I just don't think that that's the way to go. I think that being all on our own and having to administer, we would have to pay...
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I understand there's that administrative burden. I mean, I do wonder, though, what, what other options there would be, because to me, it sounds like in this program, we are subsidizing other counties that are not performing well.
And then they would subsidize us when we're not performing well.
But, I mean, that hasn't happened.
Then they're not really subsidizing us, though. I mean, they are, we are all on our own, pay our own premiums.
Right, but the, the rebate is, depends on the performance of the group, correct?
No, the rebate, as I said, it depends...
It's a pot of the rebate. The, the overall pot depends on the performance of the group.
It does.
And then our slice of that pot depends on our individual performance.
Right.
So there is, there is a motivation. I mean, you want the best performing counties to be part of that pot because that, that increases the amount of money that's going to be divvied up on the counties.
Okay, but the performing counties can turn into non-performing counties, and that's when you want to be in a group, just like with healthcare as well, just like with SEBCO and everything.
Well, yeah, but if the performing counties, if the other performing counties turn into non-performing counties, that hurts Gagga County.
How would it hurt Gagga County?
Because then, the, I mean...
How would it, I mean, really, how would it hurt? Would it hurt our premium? Nope.
No, but it would, it would, it would hurt the amount of refund that would come back to us, correct?
Right. Or we're not in it, and we get no free refund. We get no rebates.
So this is the, the only, so I guess I don't understand then why, why is this the only way we get a refund is being, being part of the pool? Like, how, how does that work that money is clawed back only if you're part of the pool?
Because this is the program. I don't know of another program where you're getting refunds back or rebates.
Where does the refund come from? The BWC?
Right, it's coming from the...
Okay. And then why do they give this only to this certain program?
Because we're in the program and following the protocol. I don't, I don't know how else to explain it. Am I explaining this correctly? I'm trying.
Well, I, this reminds me of the healthcare stories since I was healthcare trustee for 30 years with Reclairs. And it's, and I was point person for certain township healthcare, and we did searches on it and everything else. When you're in a consortium, and you're do-good, you're do-good, and then all of a sudden, the fourth or fifth year, there's a lot of bad accidents and everything else. So the other ones, you know, it balances it out, so instead of having a 12% increase, you might have a five and a half.
Right.
Or, or whatever.
Exactly.
Because everything balances out. And I think one time, the different townships got different healthcare, because they were lowballed, they got a really good price the first year, second, and then the third year, it damned or doubled.
Right.
Because they were out of a consortium. So I, I hate to see us, I mean, since I've been here, this has been a good program. It's a, it's a team effort with the 59 counties in the program. So I, me personally, I like to stay in it, so.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Boy.
Yes.
But still, continue studying this process, because maybe next year or the year after, we'll do something different.
Right, and I, and I want you to know, and I, with, with my whole heart, you know, the way I have been born and raised in this county for the last 20 years, is that the taxpayer dollars, frugality, always looking at the best interest and, and saving money has been at the top of the list. It's been my directive, no matter what Commissioners I have served under, and it's going to continue that way. So if I thought for a minute that this, this program was not in the best interest of the, of the taxpayers and this county, I would absolutely would be doing something, and we are always monitoring that, so...
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number 19.
The Commissioners' Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number 10, increasing the contract GMP Phase One and Phase Two with Infinity Construction Company on the courthouse expansion project for additional audiovisual upgrades and the deletion of a network switch in the amount of $11,344. And this action item is related to the discussion that Ms. Burhenny brought forward at last session during a board discussion with Frank from ADP.
Okay. And this was approved by ADP Board, all right, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve item number 19.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes.
Item 20, the Commissioners' Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment and compensation of public employees pursuant to ORC 121-22-G1.
I'm in the bookroom.
Second.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes. And...
Kathy. Kathy will be joining us.
Okay.
Okay.